All right, we're going to call the Commissioner meeting to order. First, we're going to do the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Carver, if you'd please do the honors.
I pray. Lord, I thank you for the promise of 2023, a new year in a county that's indeed been blessed by you. And I pray tonight, Father, that we might be wise in our deliberation as this commission thinks about the business here. Review yourself through our discussions and our desire to please you. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additional items for the agenda? Do you have a motion to approve the agenda? As written?
Motion to approve the agenda is written.
Have a second? Are all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Thank you. Approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? All right, we're going to do a nice proclamation. Joyce McGehee. There is she. She's coming.
Is honoring retirement employee Joyce McGehee and her years of service to Lee County. Whereas Joyce McGehee has worked in the local government for more than 19 years. And whereas, after starting her local government career, Ms. McGehee missed the career with Moore County and Human Resources Director for three years, she joined the Lee County Human Resources Team as Director in 2006. And whereas Joyce McGehee and the Human Resource Department have been instrumental in a number of projects, including the Stars Rewards and Recognition Employee Program, employee evaluations, Wellness Clinic Wellness Programs, New Employment Orientation Process, Employee Newsletters, Employee Appreciation Day, and other employee activities, criminal history background checks for employees and volunteers, health savings accounts, county insurance plan, as well as writing a Lee County safety policies. And whereas Joyce McGehee, the genuine care and dedication to Lee County Government, has been prevalent throughout her years of service, providing meaningful and significant impact to the lives of Lee County employees during her tenure. And whereas, it is a desire to the Lee County Board of Commissioners to congratulate the achievements of Mrs. McGehee and express appreciation for her and her dedicated service and many contributions to Lee County. And now therefore be proclaimed by the Lee County Board of Commissioners that it recognizes the honors and the more than 16 years Joyce McGehee has invested in furthering the mission and purpose of Lee County Government and its wishes that Mrs. McGehee continues success in all her future endeavors presented this day, January 2023.
I'd like to thank all of you, the Board of Commissioners, for giving me this job. Some of you didn't, but some of you helped me, so that's good. And I really appreciate my years in Lee County. I love my job. It's a wonderful job. And I want to thank Dr. Crumpton. I think we have spent the last 16 years together, and all of the department heads, because they have been very supportive and they've helped me in everything that I do. And I thank my family too, because they are very supportive. And I'm really emotional about leaving the county, but it's time. And I feel sure that the person taking my place is going to do a great job. But thank you for Lee County, and I'm proud that I work in Lee County. Thank you.
Don't move.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on agenda is public hearings. First one is zoning text amendment for Lee County Unified Development Ordinances for... What are we calling this one?
Good evening, Commissioners, Planning Board members, and staff. Information regarding this item is on pages of 129 through 132 of the Commissioner Agenda Packet. As I'm sure you're all aware, staff was directed by the Sanford City Council to prepare a UDO text amendment to allow religious complexes or churches within the Central Business District zoning classification. The Central Business District only exists in the downtown areas of Sanford, Old Jonesboro, and Broadway. Lee County has no downtown area and no land zoned Central Business District. However, since the UDO is the local zoning ordinance for Sanford, Broadway, and Lee County, all three jurisdictions should consider this amendment for allowing religious complexes within the Central Business District zoning classification and take action. For your reference, this text amendment was approved by the City Council on October the 11th and by the Broadway Board of Commissioners on December 19th. In summary, Lee County has no Central Business District. However, since the UDO is the local zoning ordinance for Sanford, Broadway, and Lee County, the boards should take action on this item. Additional information is provided in your agenda, and I will be glad to elaborate on and answer questions if needed. Otherwise, this concludes my staff report.
Does Board have any questions? At this point in time, we're going to open the public hearing. For all those in favor, please come forward, state your name and address. Like wish to speak.
I don't believe we had anyone sign up to speak on the sign-in sheet.
Anybody against? All right, we close this public hearing. And we're moving on to the next one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Information regarding this proposed text amendment is on pages 133 through 138 of the Commissioner's Agenda Packet. Staff has drafted a UDO zoning text amendment in response to the increasing number of mobile food vendors, commonly referred to as food trucks, operating in Sanford, Lee County, and Broadway. The new land use would be mobile food vendor and its associated supplemental standards would allow greater flexibility for staff in issuing permits for food trucks, a more practical administration of the food truck's use and operation throughout the community, and increased public safety by facilitating more coordination with the Lee County and other counties' health departments. The proposed standards include permitted locations of use, the location of food vendors within a particular site so as to avoid obstructing traffic and emergency vehicles, and the safe preparation handling of food and disposal of resultant waste. In conjunction with these land use standards, a draft copy of the Mobile Food Vendor application has been prepared for review and is included in your agenda packet. This application can also be used to collect food truck operators' information, to ensure staff administers permits fairly and accurately, and to provide general information to permit applicants regarding mobile food unit and health department standards. Once again, this is a text amendment to create a new land use, mobile food vendor specifically for food trucks, because right now we currently lump those in with all temporary uses, and we feel that it's a unique enough use to have its own unique standards. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Now, I have a couple of questions. There is some limiting uses in there, one food truck per lot.
Yes, sir.
Who decided on that one?
We determined that, staff did, based on our research. We thought that was reasonable, because right now we're also working on a food truck parks text amendment that would allow locations with more than one food truck at one time.
So you're doing one before the other? Would you like to put that together?
Yes, sir. Well, we had more of a demand for the initial food truck, one truck at one location, so we chose to do that one first, so that we could do research on the food truck parks while we were presenting the food truck text amendment to you.
Because this particular thing kind of pretty much limits them to one area. If you look at Apex, you look at Southern Pines, they have all had little food truck courts, correct?
Food truck courts, yes, sir. What this particular text amendment pertains to is allowing one food truck on a location that is zoned commercial. What we are working on currently as staff and will bring to you within the next couple months is a text amendment to create and to allow the food truck parks that I believe you're referencing.
Well, my just feeling is I think that should come hand in hand. It shouldn't be one before the other, because you're limiting, then you're opening up.
Sure.
That's kind of confusing, and that's just my main concern. There was another one in terms of operating a food truck in a residential area?
Correct. That would not be allowed and is not currently allowed.
And so is that all businesses, or is that just food trucks?
Food trucks, mobile food vendors.
Why can other businesses work in residential areas, but food trucks can't?
So food trucks right now, excuse me, are considered a temporary use. We issue temporary use permits. And some temporary uses are allowed in residential zoning districts and some are not. Most are only allowed in commercial zoning districts where businesses are located. But say, for instance, your church wanted to have a big tent revival in a big field in the county that zoned residential, that type of use would be allowed in a residential district. But you are correct in that most temporary uses that have some type of retail sales are only allowed in commercial zoning districts.
What about an ice cream truck?
An ice cream truck would fall within this category.
They can't go through residences?
They can go through residences and stop in the right of way. This regulates development on private property. They couldn't, say for instance, they couldn't come to your house every day at 3:00 and sit in your driveway and sell ice cream, but they could stop on the street in front of your house and sell ice cream.
So that's only pertains to temporary?
Temporary, yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
And I believe we have at least one person that signed up to speak. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, my only question was, in... So if you're saying they can only operate, say, one in the Piggly Wiggly parking lot?
Yes, ma'am.
He signs up to open from 1:00 to 5:00. Is then someone allowed to sign up from 5:00 to 7:00, or is it just one use and they get the 24 hours? Are there going to be... And who's regulating the permits that come in and watching and making sure that this is coming through and?
Our department is regulating the permits.
Yes.
I'm going to have Thomas Mears, my colleague who works with me, step to the podium, because he actually did the research on this text amendment, and he can answer your first question.
Hello, good evening. Yes, so the current, the way the current regulations work and the way we currently consider food trucks, you can still only have one food truck on private property right now if you were to use it as a temporary use. As you can probably tell, we don't regulate it very well, because you can't, because there are just so many food trucks, and the current regulations that we have are really impractical, so to the point where food trucks don't really obey them in the first place. So creating this text, this new proposed text amendment, does allow for more flexibility. It's more business friendly, but it also does allow for more enforcement, so we can actually have, you know, just more coordination with Lee County Environmental Health to make sure that all food trucks have their health certifications, but it also does allow for us to keep track of where food trucks are and where they go. But to answer your question more specifically, yes, as long as one food truck is operating on private property at one time, that would be allowed. So you could theoretically have like a breakfast food truck, and then a lunch food truck, and then a dinner food truck.
So that's another good point. You said you're going to... We know where they're going. How do you know where they're going? They can come from out of, they can come from another county, they can go to another county.
That's true.
They don't have to call you and tell you they're here.
Technically, actually, per... So I wrote these ordinances in conjunction with Mr. Tony Williams, who was the previous Lee County Environmental Health Supervisor. According to state DHHS standards, they are actually supposed to notify the county in which they are going to operate.
So that's a state, that's a state?
That's correct. That's my understanding, anyway. But also, it is just, at the very least, this gives us some leeway, or gives them some leeway, and also opens up regulations that they can actually function here more freely, right? But they also have less of an excuse not to at least check in with us, tell us where they're going, and make sure they actually have their, you know, food sanitation grade.
How quickly do you turn around the permits?
Standard answer is, under normal work volume, three to five days.
Is there not an emergency, like if apartment complex or whatever wanted to host a thing? What is, I guess, what's the temporary use? Is it still three to five days right now?
Generally, yes. But I will just say, as far as my experience with that, it typically is something that is planned out a little more in advance, because if you're going to have vendors like food trucks or bouncy houses and things like that, they have to get clearance from the fire department. If they have a tent over a certain size, they have to get a flame retardant certificate from the fire marshal. So they're typically, if they're going to be responsible about it, they're supposed to have some forethought and planning too.
And then say some of the local breweries that have food trucks, and they have some that get a flat tire in the way and they have to sub in, how do they, how does that permit come in?
Sure. I have actually spoken with Mr. Tim Emmert, who is the owner of Hugger Muggger, and Mr. Craig Kraus, who, they really don't have, they're wild dogs, but they really don't have food trucks generally, anyway. But Mr. Emmert is aware of the need, and he is going to be communicating to his food trucks, because he kind of has like a stable, like a standard roster of food trucks. Believe me, I want those to stay too. But yeah, he'll have a standardized form and let his folks know, hey, if you come to my business, you need to fill out this form. And that is good for one year. They'd be able to come back ad nauseam throughout the year, and then once the year is up, they just recertify.
Okay, so it's $50 for one year?
That's correct.
For the application?
That's right.
Even if they're changing locations?
Yeah, $50. They can operate anywhere in Lee County, anywhere in the city of Sanford, anywhere in town of Broadway, so, for one full year.
Okay.
And currently, right now, the way the standards read, they actually have to go to the property owner, get written permission, state how many days they're going to be there, and they can only be there for 10 days at a time, then you have to leave for 30 days, then you can come back for 10 days. You can only do that six times per calendar year. It's a very onerous and burdensome, you know, set of regulations, so this is a little more neater, cleaner, more business friendly, so.
Okay.
So you're saying for temporary permits regardless, it's just one? What other temporary permits do you have?
Like what uses typically? It would be anything from, like if you're going to do a, like a flea market or any sort of like charity event, I think backpacks for kids, that tattoo parlor on Wilson Road.
What about any other temporary business permits?
Well, no, they put on special events, I'm thinking, or fireworks in front of Walmart and Food Lion for 4th of July. That's a great example of a temporary.
You say one vendor truck at this point in time, because they're a temporary.
That's right, because we have no other regulation language to, by which to apply to them, so.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, I open this public hearing. Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody want to like to speak against? Please state your name and address for me. Thank you, David.
Good evening. My name is David Smoke, S-M-O-A-K. Address is 96 North Ridge Trail, Sanford. I would like to speak for the intent of the UDO, but against a certain, against a couple of portions that I think have already been echoed. I do not own a food truck. I do not own a restaurant business. I have no intent on ever getting involved in that. My concern is it's generally on a freedom-based analysis from scanning through the document. I did talk to Amy a little bit before this meeting. She did clarify one of my concerns when it came to the limits on the personal property, you know, residential use of the food trucks. I am still concerned that, you know, it would be implied for people who are trying to, you know, host a private event or whatever on their property, that, you know, they want to be able to have a food truck. I just wish there was further clarification that the personal property rights of the property owners would not be limited by this document. And then the other part was something else I heard echoed, was the limit of the one food truck per parcel. I was concerned that the definition of parcel is, I think, you know, it can be pretty ambiguous. I mean, you could have a parcel that's, you know, a tenth of an acre, to a parcel that's, you know, multiple acres, and, you know, if you're having an event, it's still just, you know, one food truck without going through the, I guess, the temporary use process. So I just wish that the intent of providing clear, easier processes for the food trucks to, you know, operate legally in the county is wonderful. I just wish, you know, specifically those two areas about the use on residential property and the limitations of the one truck per parcel is addressed, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
I've got a question for staff.
Sir, please.
Let me use River Birch as an example. How many food trucks would be permitted out of that site, or how do you make that determination? Either one of you or both of you, fine.
So your question is how many food trucks could operate in the River Birch Shopping Center, for example?
Right.
Just be, it would be one per parcel. River Birch is multiple parcels simply because they have the primary, you know, shopping center area, but they also have out parcels, right? So theoretically, you could have what would appear to be multiple food trucks on one lot, because it would be in one shopping center parking lot. But theoretically, in actuality, it could be multiple, you know, food trucks on different parcels. Theoretically, it could be. It could happen.
Would they have to actually sit on the separate parcels, or is there, would they be able to get closer to one another?
I would, I would think, so in writing that ordinance and coming with that, there is no magic number for one. It was simply what most other jurisdictions that I looked at, Southern Pines, Cary, Apex, et cetera, et cetera, have, is just one per parcel, simply because it's just an accessory use. If I have a barbecue restaurant and I will, well, that's not a good example. If I have a brewery and I want to have a food truck, perfect example is Hugger Muggger. It's just one, you know, that, you know, comes in just as an accessory, as a complement to the, to the use. It's not, it's not, it's limited just so you don't create a chaotic situation, where think about in front of Piggly Wiggly, if you had four or five food trucks along there that blocked, you know, entrance ways, if one of them broke down, one of them caught fire, it's really difficult to get EMS and fire in there, you know, it just creates a little more chaos. I'm not married to the number one, but I felt like that was sort of the consensus that other jurisdictions had, so I thought that was a reasonable, reasonable number to have on there. Now, your, more to your question though about, if you had multiple food trucks on one lot or one area, they could theoretically still have a temporary use permit if they wanted to have like a food truck rodeo as a temporary use. They could theoretically... They could theoretically do that, but it would be a temporary, limited event where you still notify emergency services, you still notify public health, so.
So what does Southern Pines have down there at, what do they call it, Red's Corner?
Red's Corner, yeah. That's a food truck park, and it gets really confusing, right? There are different uses. You have the use of just an individual food truck, like I'm driving around and I'm just selling my tacos to whomever I want, you know, I pull up at one location, but then there is also the use of a food truck park or a food truck court, food truck plaza, you know, different jurisdictions have different names, but it's the same thing. But that's where you have a permanent business at a specific standalone location that does not change, it's just that the food trucks can rotate in and out if they want. That's what Red's Corner has.
But you don't have that in this UDO?
Not yet, but we don't, we don't have that now, anyway, so we're working on, Amy has come up with those standards, and it was just a matter of, you know, you have a lot more individual food truck owners that are asking for permits and that have become an issue, and only a handful of people asking about a food truck park. So we prioritized the food truck permit.
Well, I don't expect a bunch of people to build a bunch of parks, so, point being is I think it should still be in the UDO under food truck, you know, now, rather than later. You know, it's just easier clarification.
Sure, sure.
You know, because I hear the concerns.
No, I understand. I will say, yeah, the language is coming. We certainly could have, but the urgency was placed more, at least from people coming to us, was more for the actual food truck permit for the individual use, the individual truck, rather than the actual park, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Would the food stands be covered under this ordinance?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
Food stands, sometime I pass, some car wash, and they got cooking going on and selling. Where does that come under?
Like tents, so, well, that would not be, that's not a mobile, that's not a mobile food vendor.
Well, it'd be on a cart.
I think I know what you're talking about. I've seen those at the Piggly Wiggly parking lot, where they have like tents lined up. I, I don't necessarily know if that's even legal in terms of food handling. They certainly didn't come to us. I don't know, I don't think, that would not qualify under these ordinances, and I don't know that you can necessarily, just in my experience dealing with people who apply for permits to get restaurant, to actually open restaurants, they want to prepare food outside, Lee County Environmental Health tends to frown on that for obvious reasons, for, so I don't know that that is necessarily legal, even though.
You can get a day permit from the, for a weekend permit for, from the health department. You just have to follow certain procedures in order to get that, in order to.
In that case, they would need to get a temporary use permit, not the food truck permit, because it's not a truck, but yes.
That's a food cart.
Food cart, yeah, we have those, too. We have a food cart, and that would be, that is, that is more regulated now, and that wouldn't necessarily apply with the food trucks, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a procedural question.
Yes, sir.
If they finish this hearing, once we finish the hearing, they go back and review some of the comments that we made, and they change it, they change this piece of paper that we're looking at tonight, do we have to have another public hearing?
No, I don't, I don't think so, but it just comes, the change will be brought back for our, in front of our board for a vote, so you would either take their recommendation or leave it as is. Is that correct, Amy?
Yes, the planning, the planning board can make recommendations with conditions, and you can either agree to those conditions or you can add other conditions. You do not have to start over and hold a new public hearing.
The reason I ask the question is that there's, based on the conversation tonight, it's not so obvious maybe what we're trying to accomplish here in the piece of paper, and I read it, too, and I didn't, I had the same kind of reservations you did, and then Mr. Smoke also had some specific comments. I'm wondering if it would be worthwhile to ask them to review the discussion tonight and see whether or not they want to address any of those in the piece of paper that they have before it comes back to the board. That'd be my suggestion, anyway.
They're here listening.
Yes, sir, the planning board is here, and they're listening to everything, so they can either take action this evening, and they can recommend to approve as presented, they can recommend to approve with conditions, or they can table the item and instruct staff to go back and research or address these items.
Thank you.
The only thing I would say, since it's a UDO, I don't know if the city of Sanford or town of Broadway has passed the, this ordinance yet.
Yes, the city of Sanford has approved this text amendment effective February 1st.
That would be the thing we would have.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Did, sorry, did they approve with as-is?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we're ready to close it, don't we? Close already?
Yeah, you can close the public hearing.
We're going to close the public hearing, and we excuse the planning board to their meeting. Thank you. Next, we're going to do public comments. Remember, state your name and address, and you're limited to three minutes, correct? First name I have here is Kristi Patton. Please again, state name and address. Thank you.
My name is Kristi Patton. I'm at 388 Gunter Lake Road. I'm speaking on behalf of the Dream Center. My sister is currently a part of this program, and I just wanted to express the good that I've seen in this program. It's been 25 years we've been trying to help her, and of course, along the way, she got into trouble. She got put into Lee County Jail. Pastor Daniel met with her at the jail, kind of told her about the Dream Center, and she agreed to go reluctantly, the family, you know, we've about washed our hands, so they've stepped in where, to give her a chance. I can tell you, it's been just under two months bringing God into her heart, teaching her how to love herself, forgive herself, and just basically come into terms with the skeletons in her closet. This is a program that I don't know where we would, we would be right now. I'm thankful for everything that they've done, every opportunity that they've given her. Our family finally sees hope, and that's what this whole program is, is hope. It's giving everybody purpose and teaching them and putting them with people that are going through the same trials and tribulations that they are, that there's hope for them. They're not just somebody that everybody's going to just give up on. So I just want to say thank you for the funding that you've given to this program. Thank you to Life Springs Church and the Hope, or the Dream Center. I think this is a very good program. I think it is something that you could potentially help others. A lot of these that are in trouble, they're young, they can still be helped. So for that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please again, don't forget to state your name and address. Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Joey Morel, 116 West Harrington Avenue on Broadway. First, I just want to say thank you to Pastor Daniel and his team for allowing me to be here. And to give you a quick story of kind of where I'm at today. About in November of last year, I had reached my wits' end. I was at the bottom. I didn't know what to do, I didn't have a purpose. I reached out to Pastor Daniel and his team, and he referred me to Sand Hill's Adult and Teen Challenge where I entered at the end of November of 2021. I, it was a long and hard process that I had to go through to recover from addiction and other life-controlling issues such as depression and anxiety, and it was, it was a tough journey, and I couldn't have done it without the support of Pastor Daniel and my family as well, to be able to graduate the program in September of this past year. And I've been working at Sand Hill's Adult and Teen Challenge since the end of September as an intern, being able to help others that have gone through life-controlling issues and addictions as well, and I've even got to meet people that Pastor Daniel sent himself. And I just want to thank you for giving to the Dream Center, that's helped me get right with God and get right with my family. Yeah, I think that's all I got.
Excellent, thank you.
Good evening, David Smoke, 96 Northridge Trail. I'd like to speak about a different topic. I was actually more focused on goals for the year and the future budget process that I know you guys are about to go through. Good evening and Happy New Year. First of all, my own term of office as President of Carolina Trace Association has expired, so I will no longer be speaking for that community. However, I would like to help publicize that, once again, Lake Trace will be lowered for maintenance projects in the following weeks. I encourage our news media to also help spread the word that Lake Trace will appear to be dried up as viewed from Highway 87 for a few weeks, and it is okay. Second, I would like to share a few goals I would like to see accomplished and possibly convince some of you to embrace these goals as well. I do support the industrial development projects you continue to support, but there are multi-billion dollar projects that are also happening just beyond our borders, and many of those people will be tempted to live here. I do worry about the influx of so much money and possible corruption influencing the nature of our county. Just following these out, just allowing these outside developers to continue to move in with their own plans willy-nilly is sure to lead to uneven and sometimes suspect quality of projects when they move in, make their money, and move out. Number one, I recommend you commissioners identify any similar counties in or out of state that have faced similar situations and communicate with them for any lessons learned. I also encourage investing and educating our new county manager on your vision and those challenges and complications of so much growth. Two, I would like to see a plan on how industries and communities can be developed with municipal water, sewage utilities without requiring annexation by the city of Sanford. I can envision a couple of solutions, but as always, I am sure there is history and complications with any plan that I do not know of. I do know that the value of the Sanford Municipal Utility was key in bringing one multi-billion dollar investment to our area, but the growth of our entire county cannot be tied to one city's utility, or the power of that one city will dominate the entire county more than it already does. Three, I recommend an update to the master plan that was done just a few years ago. I made comments back then that I felt it was not preparing us for enough growth. I especially wanted to include the upgrade of the 421 bypass into part of the NC Core I-685 highway. Four, I believe that Lee County is becoming a bedroom community while also maintaining a strong local industrial base. I've said before that the more personal spending you keep in the county versus us traveling up to Wake or Cumberland County to shop, the more successful we will become. In my opinion, our motto should be live here, spend here. I've told previous boards that as a retired military family, we represent an annual federal injection of funds in the six-figure range in your economy. The more you have here for my wife to spend on, the more sales tax, jobs, and other growth you can achieve just from my own small family. Thousands of families are going to be attracted to live here because of our low costs compared to other counties. The trick is to keep or improve our quality of life, keeping those costs low and preserve that small-town feel that most of us appreciate. Five, and finally, I have already written to our state representatives about this issue because ultimately I would like to see the entire state to stop taxing grocery food. My understanding is that is more of a local-use sales tax that is allowed in practice in almost all of our counties. One idea I'd like you to consider for the 2024 budget or somewhere in the future is what would it take to eliminate the 2% food tax? Taxing grocery food nationwide is a pretty unusual practice.
Can you try to wrap it because of time running?
Just one more second, sir.
Appreciate it.
I personally find it regressive and petty for taxing a basic life support commodity in the grocery stores. I would like to see our county take a stand against this food tax and even publicize it to promote even greater interest and support for people to live here and spend here. Thank you.
Thank you. I can't read the first name, so I'm just going to say last name, Ingram. Is it Nadia? Perfect, thank you.
I am Nadia Ingram. I live at 1372 Heritage Way, Cameron, North Carolina. I met Daniel Owens in Lee County Jail while suffering 120 days. The Dream Center team has turned my life around in so many ways. They helped me by showing the proper way to approach certain people and situations. Also, they taught me how to forgive. Life Springs Church has helped guide me and helped change myself for the best. I became motivated and started speaking a lot in class and also volunteering. Just because you get in trouble with law enforcement, law enforcement doesn't mean your life is over. Change is coming. It's your choice to go with the new or stick with the old. Success is the key, failure is not an option. Now I have a baby boy, I also, excuse me, now I have a baby boy who has also changed my life. We are excited that the same resources that I was given can now help others not to go down the path I went. While I was in, while I was incarcerated, I was given these words of wisdom. You're either help or hinder, meaning upon relief, meaning upon my release, you can either help or hinder those around you. With the help of Mr. Owens and the people with the Life Springs Dream Center, I'm proud to say I am no longer a hinder of those in my life. I thank, I thank you, Lee County Commissioners, for allowing Life Springs Dream Center to help others have a second chance. Thank you.
Thank you. And now into old business, approval of MOU for a fourth spec building?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, I'll take that. We are being asked now to approve the MOU for the fourth spec building on the condition that Shell Building 3 is terminated before we execute the MOU. This MOU will, the county will enter into a lease for up to 24 months in the amount of $28,381.88 per month for the first 12 months, for a total of $340,582.50, and up to $32,791.17 for the second 12 months, for a total of $393,494. The developers at city CEP have asked the city in this county to consider participating in this economic development activity, and in discussions with both, or with Mr. Randolph, they're very, they're, they are very well aware that we only will enter into this condition upon the third building, wait, third, we're on the fourth, yes, the Shell Building 3, yes, that the third building's responsibilities under the MOU are terminated. So we have at your seat a sample motion indicating that we would approve the MOU for Shell Building 4 and execute the agreement contingent upon the county's responsibility with Shell Building 3 terminating to ensure there are not two MOU releases in existence at the same time. We did hold the public hearing at our December 19th meeting, and one spoke, person spoke in favor of it, and me or Mr. Randolph can answer any questions if the board has any.
I'm curious about the Shell Building 3 terminating. What are the circumstances? Does it have to be a signed lease or a purchase agreement or something to that effect, but it doesn't necessarily completely have to be executed, does it?
We would like for our responsibility, so if, once the Shell Building 3 is sold to an end user, no matter that being a lease or a final sale, a contract sale, once our obligations are ended under that, then we would execute this one, the MOU for Shell Building 4.
So it does have to be an actual lease or?
Correct.
Or sale, okay? Thank you.
Any other questions? Their motion, sir?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the MOU for Shell Building 4 and execute the agreement contingent upon the county's responsibilities with Shell Building 3 terminating to ensure there are not two MOU's releasing in existence at the same time.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any ayes? Thank you. Old business, going to Dream Center discussion.
Everybody may serve up.
He's taking this one, Mr.?
I am.
You're taking this one?
I am, Mr. Chair.
Please, thank you.
Yeah, on the last month's meeting, I had, I guess I kind of worded this wrong, and I apologize to Life Springs Church for getting y'all folks out here, but I'm glad to have you here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mike.
Lord, I thought I was loud enough, people could hear me without a mic. Anyway, first of all, this discussion- Anyway, first of all, this discussion tonight is not about Life Springs Church. It's not about the Dream Center. I'm not... I'm all for folks that's going to help other folks in this county. I agree with that totally, and it's not about you guys. And you'll see in just a minute, this discussion is not about that. I should have worded it probably different. But the main thing of it is, it's about the process we do as county commissioners to release money that is taxpayers' money. Any way we want to put it, money we give out, spend, however we do it, is taxpayers' money. And I've been in under the understanding, of course, I've been here, you know, a couple of years. One of the things I ran on as a county commissioner was, I would pray on every decision. I stated that several times in every newspaper article, every radio, everything that was done. That was the main thing. I told them who I served first. I served God first, and that's who I answered to first. I don't answer to the taxpayers after that. But my main concern was this, the time-sensitive in nature that the vote came about. And with that, it broke my number-one rule of having time to pray about something, especially of the magnitude of money that was involved in that. So I guess the time-sensitive issue was the number-one thing. There was no reason to call for a vote in that type of manner. I think, in my opinion, it should be tabled. And, you know, I voted to have it tabled to research it, to investigate things. And from my understanding during the budget session that we had, we had directed staff on our monies of nonprofit organizations. First of all, we, as a board, put a cap on how much money we would give. Not to say we couldn't give more in other ways, but that's part of the process, I think, we should have done to be able to allocate those monies to other organizations. You know, and part of that, we directed staff, first of all, find out their nonprofit staffs and statute things, that make sure everything was in order for that. We talked about duplicate organizations. We talked about several groups are doing some of the similar things to make sure of that. I'm just bringing out several things that we directed staff to do during our budget session when we capped our monies on that. I think anytime we give this amount of money away to any organization that's not in our budget, I feel like we should have a public hearing on it. Let the people know, first of all, we're not hiding anything from you. We're transparent. We're using your money in a reasonable way and something that is fair. I think every organization... I've had several organizations come up to me since then and calls of saying, "How do we get money now?" You know, you put a cap on it during your budget session, but we see there's other monies available. How do we get money? And I don't know how to tell them how to get the money now because we kind of went against our own procedures in the way we gave the money out. There again, I'm not against giving an organization the money, but I think there needs to be done with respect to each one of us as commissioners, first of all. I don't think we should... I would never bring before any of you something this magnitude without giving you a chance to research it. And you pray for it also, if you like doing that. So what I'm discussing tonight is not about the Dream Center. And again, I apologize for bringing out a discussion on the Dream Center. It's about the process of how we give our monies to nonprofits and to other organizations. Like I say, I think we just owe it to each one of us as commissioners to have time to research, do the right thing before we give our money away. I think our public should be involved in knowing how we give the money away. They should have some input. Because it is, any way we put it, it is tax dollars. It is tax dollars. And I will say this publicly in closing my part of it, if you feel that we need to go ahead and call for a vote on any situation, and I may not be totally against the thing that you're talking about, but if I don't have time to investigate it and pray about it, my vote's going to have to be no from now on. And people's going to look at me sometimes and say, "Why'd you vote no?" But that's another thing I told them. I said, "Whenever I vote yes or no on something, there's something behind it. Find out why I voted that way." So all I'm asking is, is being as commissioners, let's do it the right way. Let's be transparent. Let's not let people think that we're calling for a quick vote and snatching the rug out from under folks. Give each one of us time to investigate, pray, or however we want to do things. So there again, Life Springs Dream Center, I'm not against you. I promise you, I'm not against that at all. But I just think we, as a commission of board members, need to do your monies right also. And I think if the shoe was on another foot, another organization was sitting out there, and you heard about money for half a million dollars getting, you'd be interested in it. And I think you'd want some comments in it. So with that being said, there again, nothing against you. I just probably said it wrong the other night about the Life Springs, but it's more about us as commissioners. And I think we need to hold ourselves accountable, and I think you, as people, need to hold us accountable. That's my part. Thank you.
Anybody else want...? Any discussion?
Well, the issue for me, quite frankly, is whether or not they even qualify. Have we received any indication that IRS has approved their application for certification as a nonprofit?
For 501(c)(3), no, sir. We have not. But they understand that they have to provide that to us when they receive it.
That's fine. But the question then comes to mind is, then how do you even qualify for applying if you're not even a nonprofit? I'm not asking you to give me an answer. I know the answer. I know the answer. You don't qualify. And until that has been taken care of, this board technically has no reason to even visit the idea of awarding any appropriation.
Could I ask for a clarification? Was there a 501(c)(3) approved for Dream Center or not? Did you see that?
No, sir. We do not have the documentation that they have their 501(c)(3).
In the past, we would require any new applicant to provide that documentation along with the application.
I understand your point. I think it's well-taken. I was under the impression that we had a 501(c)(3).
Well, they filed it with the Secretary of State, but the determination letter from the IRS has not been returned. It was my understanding.
They've applied, but they have not been certified, to my knowledge. Because what you're doing is opening the door for anyone who decides they want to apply for money, regardless of their status.
I understand your point. I was just trying to get clarification because I was under the impression that their 501(c)(3) had been approved. And it must have been an error in that.
So was I.
Right, so they filed the Articles of Incorporation and all of that with the Secretary of State for North Carolina, but they haven't received the IRS determination letter. And we've met with them and explained that, and explained that we couldn't enter into a contract until they have that determination letter.
Could we characterize it, then, by saying that you were aware of the fact that it hadn't been finished?
No, sir.
But you had confidence that they were moving in the right direction and that the protection for the county would be that until they can present that piece of paper, we don't enter into a contract with them. Is that correct?
I didn't know that the night you all voted, though, in full disclosure.
Well, it wouldn't matter if you did know. She's not the county commissioner, she's the council. This board is the one that votes on the money.
According to the board's policies, we would not have entered into a, you know, or presented the contract back to the board until we had the 501(c)(3) attached to the contract. If that... Does that answer your question?
I think so. I'm trying to figure out what action is appropriate at this point. And if I understand correctly, where we are is that the contract has to come back to the board to be approved, and you're not going to present that contract until you have that piece of paper that says the 501(c)(3) is approved.
That's correct.
That still begs the commissioner's issue in that... In my view, I was not aware of that issue, and that's my mistake, as much as anybody's, I guess. But... So I'm hearing what he's saying. But I still think that there's a fix that we can move forward and get that contract executed correctly.
Are you suggesting to me that the application that we've already received, which is invalid in my mind, if they get approved, will stand as is, as presented? Because what you're telling the public is that anyone who wants to be considered a nonprofit can apply first, get approved by the IRS later, and be awarded funding as a result. That's not complicated. That's not complicated.
It may not be complicated, but it deserves a look. I'm just not sure that we can resolve that right here, right now. But it deserves some additional thinking. And like I say, I understand that it begs your issue.
That's the equivalent of a person getting caught driving without a driver's license, gets pulled over and said, "I don't think I ought to get a ticket because I'm in driving training, I just haven't got a license yet." Well, that's what we're doing here. That's what six members of this board did when you approved the funding request for the application you received, which was invalid on its face.
I guess the only other thing I'd like to know is what redress you're suggesting. What... I understand the discussion. I understand that it's a valid point.
I know.
What are you asking us to do?
The right thing. When they get certification, they reapply for funding.
My suggestion is, is like we directed staff during the...
They never made a staff...
The portion of nonprofits was for them to make sure all the paperwork was correct, make sure there's no duplicate organizations, a cap on the monies that we do budget for them. And there again, I understand this is not a budget item and all that, but I think anytime this amount of money or different amounts of money needs to be brought before to have a public hearing, to give people to mention their perspective on yes, no, and differ. I just think anytime this amount of money, and to be fair for all nonprofits, it needs to be done... That's the part of the problem. Like I say, this dealt within my spirit was, it was such a rush for us to vote that night. And there again, I wouldn't want to make any of you have to vote on something that quickly where you didn't get a chance to... Your thought process on it. I just don't think that's fair as a board for us to put that on each other.
Okay, Mr. Chair, if I may?
You may. Thank you.
All right, here's my two cents where... I just think there's a better way this should have been done. I think you guys should have talked to us before we come here that night and not anticipated that you had your four votes, and talked to us. Because I think we would... I think... I know I would have been on board, which I voted for. And I want Life Springs to know that this is in no way anything bad towards you guys. This is about the process, just like Mr. Commissioner Lovett spoke about. But I think if you guys would talk to us, and the right way to have done it was, we would have... Could have agreed with it, and I know I would. The two board members that actually go to Life Springs, and I'm not talking about Ms. Borbeck, I'm talking about Ms. Lovell and Mr. Carver, you could have recused yourself, and we still could have voted in favor of this. It doesn't have a good look to it in the media because everybody's coming at me, "Oh, you got people on your board voting or selling the church $500,000 over three years." And I have to say, "Well, you're right," because we did do that. But I just think the right thing to do would have been to come up here and disclose that you did go to Life Springs Church, and you could have recused yourself, and we could have did this thing. We wouldn't look like a bunch of jack legs in the media right now. So I'm just asking, in the future, talk to us. When you have your little Friday morning meeting, just think about talking to us, you know, sometimes. So I'm not suggesting that there was anything illegal done at all, just borderline unethical. And I would have liked to see you guys recuse yourself. We would have voted for it. We would have still run into these problems about 501(c)(3).
Yeah, because we didn't know about that. None of us knew about that.
I didn't know about it, either. So... But I do now, and I hope they go forward and get approved, and we can take a look at it again. But that's basically all I got to say about it.
Thank you.
For clarification purposes, so you're asking us to... Us as in, I'm assuming, this side, that side, to come talk to you? Are we even legally allowed to? Like, how many can we have in a discussion?
No, you're not supposed to have more than four board members in a discussion
Yes, exactly.
On anything at any time.
Okay.
Three, and then one can go talk to another. But I'm just saying, I don't have to meet. Just pick up the phone and say, "Cameron, we're talking about this. What do you think about it?"
Okay.
Then I would have said, "Life Springs is doing great things, and they have been doing it for years, and yeah, I'm for it." And then we wouldn't have run into all this things that unnecessary.
I'm not for discussion. I agree. I was just trying to get the logistics, I guess.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, on to the next item. Daymark 24/7 service discussion. Who's that going to?
I can do that. Mr. Reese has asked in the past about some additional services at Daymark. And at your seats, I was able to get in touch with them towards the end of last week. And at your seats are some samples of different services that they can add to our existing services that are being held locally. I think what we would need to do is, once everyone has had a chance to review, the staff has had a chance to review and digest it, then we meet with Daymark to determine what things we would like to move forward with. And the gentleman from Daymark, the CEO, indicated that he was more than happy to come down, have a meeting with any one of us staff members and/or commissioners. Give that information to you.
Counselor, will you answer this question for me? This is the first time I've actually seen this document that Daymark submitted. And I have not had a chance to review it. My question is the same as the initial question. Are they willing to put a person on call so that our law enforcement people may receive some help and relief? Most of you may know or should know that Harnett County just had the second shooting of a person who was subject to involuntary commitment. A second death. The person was having a mental health episode. They don't have them necessarily eight to five. So the only question I've ever asked of Daymark was, would you put a person on call? We have other agencies who have people on call. Why is this so difficult? I don't understand why Sand Hills is not more involved directly in this. I don't understand why Sand Hills is not more involved directly in this request. We'll wind up paying for it, I'm sure.
Yes, sir. We will.
I agree.
And it's really a staffing issue in what they provide to the rest of the counties in the service area. So, you know, they have a basic line of service, and if you want a higher line of service, they're going to want you to pay for it. So in this particular...
That's a real surprise.
...option, they did have an option for co-locating law enforcement agency service, where they hire staff to be co-located with the law enforcement agency.
Okay.
And it is, you know, they're estimating the cost at $65,000 plus benefits. So you probably look around $85,000, $90,000 a year.
Okay.
Which is, you know, something that we, you know, we plan on discussing at the budget retreat as part of the options that you all will be discussing, you know, for going forward. But they gave us a whole laundry list of items here, because there's been a lot of different discussion, not just about the mental health issue, but, you know, the opioid response, and how we're going to spend that money, and trying to work with different agencies about, okay, what are we going to do? So we're trying to work through those proposals. But this one, so far, probably is the most reasonable to get that 24-hour care, or at least that 24-hour response. I wouldn't call it care. It's really more of a crisis...
Right, exactly.
...thing to figure out what's going on.
Exactly.
If you, you look at the whole issue, and then you look at the 24/7/365 issue, you're looking at a big number. And that would be the thing that would help, you know, the emergency room and get, you know, the Bayborough Health folks out of the emergency room and into a different facility. And, you know, it's pretty close to a million dollars a year to provide that level of service. But at some point, if the state's not going to fund that type of thing, you know, we have to look at it, I believe, because it's impacting not just the emergency room, but it impacts our EMS service and ties up our law enforcement. And we just don't have anywhere to take anybody.
I appreciate that background. But once again, my point is primarily families receiving that kind of support when they're dealing with involuntary commitment. That's not happening every week and every day. That's an on-call, when necessary, person to come out. And if I'm not mistaken, I think I read somewhere that we're supposed to have $1.5 million set aside for mental health. We ought to be able to squeeze $65,000 out of there for that purpose, I would hope, anyway.
We could. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Maybe get some other counties who don't have that service too. If it's not that you said, if it's every so often, all get together on that, right?
I would support that as well. Yeah, but my point again is, we're tying up several law enforcement offices.
We can't be the only county having this problem, right?
I beg pardon?
We can't be the only county having this issue.
And we're not. As I said, Harnett just had two cases within the last year where people were killed as a result of not having that kind of support available.
My understanding from the Daymark CEO is that he's having similar, they're having similar conversations in other counties as well.
Now I know what bill crap means. You know, seriously.
But that's a good reach out to other counties.
Now, we're having a lot of conversations with Moore County right now. Wayne Best, our county manager. We're both in a similar situation in that we probably didn't get enough opioid money to handle the issue by ourselves
Right, that's right.
and trying to figure out a way to work together to address that issue along with mental health. So we do have a willing partner south of us to try to put something together.
And one other point about the opioid money that needs to be brought out to the public is that they hear one large number, $11 million. You don't get that all at one time, at all. And so while it sounds like a great opportunity, $300,000 a year is not a whole lot of money to put toward that kind of problem.
Yeah, it actually works out to about $170,000. We get $350,000 the first year, and then it works out to about $175,000, $180,000 a year for the next 14 years.
Oh, boy, they're big spenders. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Can we move on? New business, major subdivision preliminary plot for Winding Creek Farms. And you're back.
I'm back with my last item of the evening. And if Colin will queue up the PowerPoint presentation. Before I begin my presentation, the county attorney has asked me to remind you that the first item we need to address is state law requires you to acknowledge whether or not you have a conflict of interest with the preliminary plot for Winding Creek Farm subdivision, Section 12.
Does anybody have a conflict?
No.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So this information is on pages 162 through 205 of your agenda package. I've also taken the liberty of putting 11x17s at your seats of the items that are displayed on the screen this evening. As a reminder, preliminary major subdivision plots do not require a public hearing. They simply require compliance with the design standards of the UDO subdivision regulations and board action. This evening, Van Harris Realty Incorporated is requesting to record six new lots of Section 12 in the Winding Creek Farm subdivision. This is a single-family residential subdivision served by private community wells and individual private septic systems that's located off of Cricket Hearth Road and Carpenton Road in Western Lee County. The preliminary plot approved in 2000 has expired. Therefore, these lots and all future lots within this subdivision must be illustrated on a revised preliminary plats that will be reviewed by the planning board and approved by the county commissioners. On the screen behind you is a GIS aerial image illustrating the location of this subdivision and outlined in the bold orange outlines are Section 12. Now we move on to, one more, please, Colin. There we go. This is the preliminary plot illustrating the lots that the applicant would like to create at this time. As part of this review, the applicant has submitted a subdivision exception application stating that the full extent of Winding Creek Farm that was approved nearly 20 years ago is not currently developable due to poor soil quality and topography. Therefore, the information presented at this time will serve as the new master plan for this subdivision. What that means is, based on the poor soils and the fact that this subdivision is served by private septic systems, the applicant anticipates these are all the lots he will be able to create at this location. The planning board met on December the 19th and recommended the commissioners approve the revised preliminary subdivision plot as presented with the subdivision accepted that was requested. This concludes my report, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
And I believe we have the applicant and/or applicant representatives here this evening, if you'd like to hear from them.
One more time, you see the board voting in this?
Yes, sir.
For approval?
For approval.
Thank you. Questions?
So what is up for discussion now, if it's been approved?
Okay, and I know this is the first time you voted on a preliminary plot. So when there's a major subdivision plot that goes in front of the boards, the planning board takes action first, because no public hearing is required. Then staff presents the recommendation of the planning board to the board of commissioners, where you take action. You vote to either approve or deny the preliminary plot with or without conditions.
Okay. And that's already been done, or that is currently here?
The planning board has recommended, because they're a recommending board on land use matters, the planning board has recommended that the commissioners approve this preliminary plot because it meets the subdivision regulations of the UDO.
Got it. Okay. And then, so these are, how many homes are going into the subdivision?
It would be six new lots, one home on each lot.
Okay, and then the other, I see there's a home between, you know, on the left side of the street and there. Does that get included in?
If the home is already there, the lot has already been legally created, and it's not part of this plot.
So you would have a subdivision...
This is Section 12 of an existing subdivision.
Got it. Following now. Thank you.
That's okay.
So this is already a subdivision here?
Yes, ma'am, it is. And if we can go back to the aerial image, Colin, I think they can perhaps better visualize their existing homes along Cricket Hearth. And then this land is near the end or the terminus of Cricket Hearth?
And now it's making more sense on the plots that aren't good for soil, and I'm following.
Exactly. There's a large balance of 48-acre remainder
Yeah.
that the planning board has some hesitation calling this the master plan, because they thought perhaps that could be developed in the future. At this time, the applicant is saying the soils are so poor that that's why it hasn't been developed thus far and probably can't be in the future. But if that is to change, it will come back before you.
Okay, and then, sorry for, I'm just, so part of the subdivisions, this has already been, I know the new, and maybe I'm speaking within, I'm getting city and county compliance stuff in mixed up, but this doesn't have to then have the open space requirement type?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Trying to figure out another use for that 40 acres that's just sitting there.
And staff typically doesn't put an item on the agenda subdivision plot unless it complies with the UDO subdivision regulations. And if a developer pushed us to do so, we would tell you what doesn't comply.
Got it. Okay.
One question I have about the 49 acres or 48, whatever the right number is. Did the fact that that wasn't going to be developed play into the board's sense of approval and why they were recommending that it be approved? The fact that those 49 acres would not be developed?
Yes, and, yes, sir. They took that into consideration and called this their master plan, because developers are required to have a master plan. The one that was approved in 2000 illustrated more lots. But since that time, it's been determined that this area really isn't developable at this time. And once again, if something happens and technology changes with septic systems and this area is proposed for development, it will come back before you.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you. Next item, purchase of playground equipment.
Good evening, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Our staff is seeking approval tonight for the purchase of the playground equipment for Temple Park Phase Two and the shelter. There was $310,000 allocated from the ARPA revenue loss funding for Temple Park Phase Two. The cost of the equipment is $266,803. And it's all part of a source well contract that is provided in your agenda package. The source well contract will satisfy the bidding requirements associated with the purchase and allow us to keep moving forward. There's a picture and quote attached in your agenda as well, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Joseph, I think I read that this equipment is pretty much the equivalent of what we have over at Kiwanis Family Park or Horton.
It's very close, but what we did with this park was we geared this playground to ages two, two-twelve. So it's not as big, but it's got just as many elements and play value. So that way, more children will be able to use it at one time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I've got a difficult question for you. I'm always concerned about park usage. And I know you don't have enough staff to assign a person to monitor it all day, but do we have any way of at least checking periodically to see how much usage is actually taking place?
Yes, so our staff, Monday through Friday, do a very good job of checking. And we're fortunate to have dedicated staff that live here in the county. So we might be out riding around doing something, but if we go by a park, we're definitely paying attention.
All right, thank you. I mention that because, you know, the city has some that still look brand new in some of the neighborhoods.
Right.
Because they're not used.
That's right. I can tell you the park projects that we have done, Horton Park and KCP and OT Sloan, all those are getting used very heavily. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Thank you, sir. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next item on the list is the budget procedure calendar.
Good evening. In your agenda, you have a tentative budget procedure calendar, and I'm asking for approval tonight. One of the more notable pieces is that we will be bringing to the board the budget on May the 15th. That is tentative. And we can discuss more about the budget work sessions at the board retreat later this month.
As we review, any discussion? Move to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any nays?
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
I guess that's it.
Yes, we're almost there. You'll have to put up with me much longer. All right, manager's report, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We've been asked by Margaret Murchison, who I believe has left, to announce some events centered around the Martin Luther King Holiday on Monday. This Sunday, January 15th, at the Martin Luther King Park, right on Hornet Boulevard. At 2:00 p.m., there'll be a wreath ceremony. Then on Monday, January 16th, right here in the Lee County Civic Center, there are programs at 10:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. And vendors who participate in Monday's event can begin setting up at 8:00 a.m. So I have done what Ms. Murchison has asked us to do in announcing that. Just want to let the board know, I didn't do a report for this meeting. I'll have a report for you at the budget retreat. You're going to get plenty of information there. But on a couple of the projects, the multi-sports complex last week, the multi-sports complex should be out to bid in mid to late March, receiving bids hopefully around May 1. So that's moving quickly. And then the library, we should be picking up steam with that this summer. And our construction manager at risk, Sanford Contractors, is anticipating beginning to get pricing, and will be reporting to the board at that point what's going on. So a lot of things going on with those projects. The Horton Park Pool project is moving along, and we're still looking at a May 1 substantial completion date and opening Memorial Day weekend. So hopefully that timeline will not alter, but the contractors are working quickly on those projects. So I also want to let the board know that we'll be meeting with the state on the 25th of January out at Endor Iron Park. And, whoops, shouldn't have said Endor Iron Park, because it's not a park yet. So Endor Iron property that the state owns, that was supposed to be a state park, to walk the site with them. And many of the folks who are on staff there have not been on the site. So we'll be touring that site and discussing possible... So, um, we'll be touring that site and discussing possible, um, uh, partnerships on the site. So very exciting times to be in Parks and Rec in Lee County. And, uh, it's been a lot of fun. That's my report, sir.
Thank you. Commissioners comments? Let's start down there. Commissioner Lovick, thank you. Are you all out?
I'm sorry.
Are you all out of comments today? We're doing commissioner comments, you're up.
Yeah, I got you.
Thank you.
I, I was looking for my audience there and they have left the room. No, thank you for those, seriously, each and every time that we have our folks come out for our meetings. We love to see them. I, I mean, it makes it more interesting for us, I know, as commissioners, but, um, like I say, this is part of my discussion tonight. Just thank you for allowing me to do that and give my input on, and, uh, like I say, I just want us to be able to, uh, do the best thing for this county, keep the interest of the county in mind and do the right things for each other as human beings and commissioners. And, um, like I say, have, hope everybody had a great, um, Christmas and New Year and, um, we lost one of our, uh, I'd like to pass this personal thing about Brian Scruggs. He was a longtime wildlife officer here in Lee County, passed away at, uh, young 56 years old. So keep his family, if you would, in prayers for that. Thank you, that's all I have. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Reeves, please, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm certainly happy to be here and glad to see all of you. Hope you had a good 2022 and a better 2023. But I do want to mention the deputy that was injured over the weekend, which was a very scary and serious moment. And I hope the board will, from this day forward, send her a get well soon card. Are you aware of it?
Am I aware of it?
No.
I know.
I was asking the manager if he'd been notified. We had a deputy that was injured.
Yes, I was waiting for the update from the sheriff.
Right, okay.
I have not heard, um, about, you know, her condition at this point.
Yeah, let's keep her in.
It just reminds us that domestic calls can, uh, go badly, so.
Very bad, very bad, yes. Let's get her card and send any of our folks a get well.
Would you like to, uh, it's going to be tough for us to sign it though, huh?
No, we'll just send it.
Send it, thank you.
The clerk will take care of it. And sign it on behalf of the board.
Right, thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up.
I don't have anything.
Commissioner, we're back.
Um, I just, I have a question, um, if I'm allowed to ask it during this time. The money that, because I was not on the board when, um, the vote was approved for the Dream Center, what money exactly was, where did the funding come from?
It's part of the ARC funding that we received and, um, it was actually part of the 1.5 million that was set aside for mental health.
Okay, and then my, I guess, second question to that, is that taxpayers' money of Lee County or?
It is actually federal funding.
Okay.
But it is, we received it, so it now is revenue that we received, so we classify it as tax.
Okay.
You know, payer's money, either way.
But the current residents haven't been billed a bill for this money and they paid into it.
In their federal income tax, they paid a portion.
For federal, okay. I'm just, I'm just trying to get clarification on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Some of that money is mine because I paid my federal tax.
Yes, we, um, yeah, we pay, you know, the federal funding, state funding, all comes to us through either federal income tax or state.
I wanted the clarification on that because I know it's on where the actual funding was coming from.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, um, Commissioner Sharp, I just want to agree that I would love to open doors on communications, on things like that, and maybe part of that is us switching up chairs and not being it, feeling like we're on one side versus the other. So, um, I would love that to be a unison and us come together as a, as a board and not feel like we're separate, so. But other than that, I'm excited for what 2023 is going to bring and I think we've got some exciting stuff coming into Lee County.
And I appreciate that, by the way. Commissioner Carver?
Yeah, and just addressing that conversation we just had, um, about the Dream Center, I think there's a whole bunch of good questions that you all have posed and things that we're going to have to be kind of introspective and kind of, you, you deserve answers back, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. But I'd like to recognize the fact that, uh, uh, our chairman is not here tonight for good reason and he is the one, in my understanding, orchestrates the communication maybe between, uh, different commissioners. And, uh, I'm sure, knowing him, he will be interested in trying to figure out some answers to the questions you're asking. I, I feel like the discussion was good, but I'm not real clear on what direction we need to go and taking some of your advice, having a little bit of time to think about it is probably not a bad idea. My heart goes out to, uh, the commissioner, I'm sorry, the chairman tonight and, uh, the fact that he's away because of some death in his family. Thank you.
I have one other thing I didn't say.
Yes, sir.
At a football game, I want to know that, so.
So slow it down?
Yes, for you.
For me?
Yeah, for you, slow it down.
Well, thanks for putting up with me tonight. I wasn't ready for this today, I found out that pretty fast.
Pretty tough.
As you can see. Um, I, I'm glad to see everybody's here well, um, and hopefully everybody had a wonderful Christmas. Just remember, keep those people in your prayers. Sometimes the, these types of holidays can be a stressful time for a lot of people. And let's give prayers to our deputy for full recovery. And I, I'd like to just illustrate, I think, uh, we've all seen the news on a football player from the Buffalo Bills and, um, uh, it's just the, the good part of silver lining, I think, it does show that, um, I think people as a whole are wonderful people. And that was illustrated. I'd love that he's gotten from around the country and the charities that everybody donated to his charity for, um, uh, I think privileged kids getting toys and things of the same nature. I think he wanted a $20,000 contribution. I think he got six, some, seven, I don't know.
Some million.
What is it now?
It's almost nine million.
How much?
Almost nine million.
Yeah, or more than five million, so, um, it, it's good, good in the heart. I move that we adjourn? Anybody in motion?
So move.
Thank you, sir. We are adjourned, thank you.